Good evening. I am Nicole McStay, Deputy Town Administrator, and I will be presenting a guide to Peterborough’s 2020 Town Meeting Process. Tonight’s information session will cover a few things. First, I will provide a summary of what the deliberative session is, followed by why and how we will pass it over and move directly to ballot voting. I will also discuss this year’s voting process, including how absentee ballots can be gotten, and for those who still wish to vote at the polls, how in-person voting will work. Lastly, I will review the items on the ballot. I will not be taking questions tonight. Please submit your questions to the Administration Office by email, by telephone, or by mail. Questions will be posted to the town’s website and answered at a follow-up virtual session on June 30th at 6:00 p.m. The Town of Peterborough’s Charter divides Town Meeting into three sessions: the deliberative session, the ballot voting, and the open session, which were originally scheduled for April and May of this year. At the deliberative session, the town’s legislative body, which are the registered voters in attendance, meet to discuss the articles to be presented on the ballot. Articles may be amended at the deliberative session. Once deliberation is ended, the article is moved to the ballot. Articles are not voted on until the ballot session. The open session is only required if there is a bond article to be considered; otherwise, the Select Board has the discretion to move articles to the ballot or to the open session as they deem appropriate. The COVID-19 emergency forced us to make several changes to how we hold Town Meeting this year. On March 13th, Governor Sununu issued a state of emergency declaration and subsequently issued Emergency Order 16, which prevented gatherings of ten or more persons, and Emergency Order 23, which temporarily modified municipal and local government statutory requirements. In response to the emergency declaration, on March 18th, the Select Board took the step of moving all articles in the Town Meeting warrant to the ballot. They were able to do this because there was no bond article for the voters to consider at an open session. On April 3rd, Town Moderator Phil Runyon postponed Town Meeting, moving the deliberative session to June and ballot voting to July. As we neared the end of May, it became clear that holding a deliberative session, as we have traditionally done, would not be possible due to the ongoing limitations on gatherings, restrictions to travel to and from retirement communities, and public health concerns. To find a way to hold Town Meeting, Town Attorney John Ratigan worked with the Secretary of State’s office and the Attorney General’s office to lay out a way that voters in Peterborough could bypass the deliberative session and move directly to ballot voting. They agreed that voting could go forward if voters approved an additional question, which would appear on the ballot after Articles 1, “The Election of Officers,” and 2, “Zoning.” The question will appear as Article A, and it will read, “Shall this Town Meeting be conducted by ballot voting on the warrant articles with no debate on the articles and no proposed amendment to any warrant article?” If Article A passes by a simple majority, meaning 50% of the vote plus one, then the votes taken on the remaining articles on the ballot, Articles 3 through 17, will be valid and counted. On May 27th, Moderator Runyon agreed with this proposal, and on June 9th, the Select Board also agreed and signed an amended warrant. Due to the COVID-19 emergency, all voters may vote via absentee ballot, and for their safety and the safety of others, we are urging everyone to do so. Applications for absentee ballot are available on the town’s website, www.townofpeterborough.com. Voters may also register to vote via absentee registration by contacting the town clerk, as shown on this slide, and requesting a registration packet. This contact information also appears on the town’s website. When you go to the town’s website, you will find information about absentee voting and absentee voting registration by clicking on the headline that I’ve indicated here with the yellow arrow. This link will remain near the top of the page until voting is completed on July 14th. For those who must vote in person, voting will be held on July 14th from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the community center, as usual. Voters will be directed to enter at the back of the gymnasium and exit out the main door to the parking lot. ADA access will remain at the main door with accommodations being made as needed. All efforts will be made to accommodate social distancing, and a comprehensive cleaning protocol is being developed. All persons working at the polls will be wearing masks, and all voters will be strongly urged to do the same. Here’s a diagram of how the community center will be laid out for voting. In this picture, Elm Street is on the right and parking is at the bottom. Voters will be directed to flow from the parking lot to the back of the gymnasium, as indicated by the yellow arrows. After checking in or registering to vote, voters will progress to the voting booths and then deposit their ballots at the counting machine and exit via the main gymnasium doors to the parking lot. Those persons requiring ADA accommodations will be allowed to enter through the main gymnasium doors, as indicated by the blue arrows. As I presented earlier, the order of the ballot will remain generally the same as it has in years past. Article 1 is “The Election of Officers.” The period to file candidacy was unaffected by COVID-19 and concluded on April 3rd. Article 2, “Zoning Amendments,” also followed a process that was unaffected by COVID-19. Article A, the question which will ask voters to waive debate and amendments and conduct voting by ballot, will follow Article 2. Articles 3 through 17 are the articles which normally would have been discussed at the deliberative session and are subject to the passage of Article A. These are the articles I will be talking about in this presentation. Before I begin going through each article individually, I would like to review the projected impact the taxpayers if all warrant articles presented on the ballot were to pass. You will see that Article 3, “The Budget for Fiscal Year 2021,” is presented as a gross expenditure budget. This means that it only shows the cost of the items and services being included in the budget and none of the revenues. This is how we are required to present it to voters by law. Of course, we anticipate receiving revenues from a number of sources, including the Highway Block Grant, motor vehicle registrations, service fees, and so on, which I am showing here as gross revenues. The net of the proposed fiscal year 21 operating budget is $7,081,634, an increase of $177,823, or 2.4% over the prior year. Add to that all the remaining warrant articles minus the offsetting funds and grants that I will describe later in the presentation. We have projected that if all the warrant articles pass on the ballot, the total amount needed to be raised by taxation will be $7,714,733. All of these articles, including the budget, were reviewed in depth by the Budget Committee and the Select Board at meetings held each Tuesday beginning January 14th and concluded with a public hearing on March 3rd. Minutes of these joint meetings were recorded with the Select Board’s minutes and are available on the town’s website. You may also stream any of the meetings by going to the town’s Ustream channel. A link to it can be found on the front page of the town’s website. Article 3, Budget for Fiscal Year 2021: To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $17,57,941 for the support of general government, water, and wastewater. This represents the fiscal year 2021 budget period, July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021. This article does not include appropriations in special or individual warrant articles addressed separately. The Select Board recommends this appropriation by a vote of 3-0. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation by a vote of 7-1. To break Article 3 out a little differently, we can look at the overall budget netted out, meaning that I subtracted the revenues from the expenses, and then broken out into its core components: the operating budget, the operating budget CIP, the debt service, and the overlay in credits. The operating budget includes all the regular costs that any business would have: salaries, supplies, electricity, and so on. It also includes the revenues raised from the grants and fees that I talked about earlier. The net operating budget is up $6,215, or 1/10 of 1% over the prior year. The operating budget CIP stands for Capital Improvements Plan. This is where you find large purchases, such as trucks, servers, and software packages. It does not include the ongoing maintenance costs associated with those items, such as diesel and licensing fees. Those are included in the operating budget. This part of the budget is offset by the money that the town saves from its capital reserve funds, as well as fees from sources like utility bills. This portion of the budget is up $43,500, or 20.6% over the prior year. Simply stated, debt service includes all of the town’s loan payments for projects like the Main Street Bridge or the library, as well as lease payments for ambulances and other large items. Some of these are also offset by revenues from other sources, such as ambulance service fees or tax increment finance districts. This portion of the budget is up $10,558, or 1.2% over the prior year. The last piece of the overall budget are the overlaying credits. This piece is shown outside of the rest of the overall budget because town staff, budget committee, and Select Board and voters really don’t have any control over whether it goes up or down. The overlay is the money that we set aside for tax payments. The credits include the Veterans Credits and Blind Tax Credit, which were substantially increased by Town Meeting vote last year. This is why there is a significant increase in this part of the budget over the prior year. There are a few items in the net operating budget which affect all of the town’s departments. This year, each department’s salary line includes a combined merit and cost of living adjustment of 3.2%. We have been notified that our health insurance premiums will be increasing by 5.7% beginning July 1st. 20% of this cost is shared with those employees who are on the town’s health insurance plan. There are no new full-time positions in the proposed budget. The town will receive the second half of a revenue sharing grant that was included in the state’s biannual budget. This revenue is not expected to be ongoing. Now I will move on to department-specific highlights within the operating budget. The Information Technology and Geographic Information Systems are a combined budget. This year, we anticipate an increase in software licensing and internet costs of approximately $9,500. If you look into the details of this budget, you will see that there is an increased payroll and related costs due primarily to a change in how staff has been allocated between this department and planning and community development. The increase in IT is mirrored by a decrease in planning and community development. There was no net change in staffing costs other than cost of living and merit increases that I spoke of earlier. In the Police Department, there was an overall increase in payroll and related costs totaling $56,000. The chief has proposed a new canine program to provide assistance primarily in searching for lost people. This would not be a trained attack dog. Veterinarian services for the life of the dog are being donated by the animal care clinic. $10,000 of this cost will go towards setup, and $5,000 goes towards ongoing maintenance costs. There is also $5,000 to repair windows at the police station. Public Works also saw a reallocation of staffing, moving some employees from buildings and grounds to highways and streets to better reflect their actual job duties. Some money has been set aside to fund consulting for management and oversight of the Main Street Bridge project after Town Administrator Bartlett retires this winter. The Highway Block Grant revenue was reduced to reflect our actual FY20 grant level. Electricity expenses related to street lighting have been reduced by $10,000, which reflects the LED upgrades completed last year. In the Assessing Department, we have budgeted $24,000 for a statistical update of property values. This update will help to bring the assessed values in line with the market values that we have seen through sales over the last 12 months. We also have several other funds that are outside the general fund. If you think of the general fund as the town’s regular checkbook, these funds operate like smaller accounts dedicated to specific purposes. The PEG Station, or Public Education Government Broadcast Station on Comcast Channel 22, will be funding $48,000 worth of improvements to the broadcast system. This expense is 100% offset by franchise fees paid by Comcast Cable subscribers. The West Peterborough Tax Increment Finance District will be funding various infrastructure improvements totaling $256,000. These will be 100% offset by the funds already raised in the West Peterborough TIF district. The Greater Downtown TIF District will fund a $20,000 Main Street corridor study intended to improve vehicle and pedestrian patterns on Lower Main Street, the section between Main Street Bridge and the Grove Street intersection. This project will also be 100% offset by TIF funds. Moving on to the Capital Improvement Plan, we have a couple of items of particular interest. In the Highway Department, we are looking to replace our nearly 40-year-old snow thrower. This vehicle is critically important for cleaning the snowbanks off of the downtown streets after a snowstorm. The purchase price of a new front loader with a snowblower attachment is $335,000. This will be offset by the Fleet Management Capital Reserve Fund, leaving a net amount to be raised through taxation of $165,000. We are also looking to purchase a building permit software package, which will help the building inspector, fire inspector, and Public Works officials keep track of the approval checklist and outstanding items associated with building inspections and occupancy permits. This package also includes an online building permit application module, which will improve access for the public. The total cost of the software package is estimated not to exceed $40,000. The next piece of the overall budget is to look at the debt service budget. Our projected net debt service is up $10,558 over fiscal year 20. The changes to the debt service we projected last year include delaying the Public Works facility renovation for six months. We had expected to start this project in fiscal year 20, however, it was put off. If the project is completed on time, the first approximately $92,000 annual payment will be part of fiscal year 2022’s budget. The Town House renovation bond was originally expected to be a 20-year bond. However, with interest rates substantially lower than expected, the actual term of the bond was reduced to 10 years. The annual payment of $99,481 is approximately $10,000 more than estimated, but the shorter term means that there will be significantly less interest over the life of the bond. The last component of the overall budget is the overlay in tax credits. As previously discussed, voters passed significant changes to various veterans’ tax credit programs at the 2019 Town Meeting. The total impact of these changes is an increase of $116,750 to the tax credit portion of the overall budget. This concludes my summary of Article 3. If Article 3 passes, the town government will operate in line with the proposed overall budget. If Article 3 fails, the voters will have to gather in person for an open session to reconsider the overall budget, as outlined in the Town Charter. As the state’s response to COVID-19 is ever evolving, no plans for how that open session would be held have been made. Article 4, Capital Reserve and Expendable Trusts: $73,100. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $73,100 to be placed in the following previously established Capital Reserve and Expendable Trust Funds: $5,000 to be placed in the GIS Capital Reserve Fund; $18,100 to be placed in the Police Department Fleet Management Capital Reserve Fund; $40,000 to be placed in the Fire Department Apparatus and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund; $10,000 to be placed in the Winter Operations Expendable Trust Fund. The Select Board recommends this appropriation by a vote of 3-0. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation by a vote of 8-0. These are the funds which are used to save money to offset the large purchases that are part of the Capital Improvements Plan. If this article passes, these funds will be raised through taxation and deposited into these accounts. If this article fails, no funds will be deposited into these accounts. Article 5, Bridge Reconstruction Capital Reserve Fund: To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $194,256 to be placed in the previously established Bridge Reconstruction Capital Reserve Fund, the sum to come from unassigned fund balance, no amount to be raised from taxation. The Select Board recommends this appropriation by a vote of 3-0. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation by a vote of 9-0. Over the last two years, the town has raised and appropriated debt service payments intended to go towards the Main Street Bridge project. However, due to delays, the Main Street Bridge project did not begin until fiscal year 2020, meaning that the first debt service payment will not occur until fiscal year 2021. In order to ensure that the funds previously raised will go towards the debt payments, we need to transfer the money for those funds from the unassigned fund balance. Because those funds were raised in prior budgets with no additional amount, no additional amount will be needed to be raised from taxation. If this article fails, the debt service payments already raised through taxation cannot be used to pay down the Main Street Bridge bond, and additional funds will have to be raised through taxation in the future. Article 6, Transfers from Cemetery Fund: $3,000. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,000 to be added to the previously established Cemetery Expendable Trust Fund and further to transfer said amount from the cemetery trustees’ checking account to the Cemetery Expendable Trust Fund. This amount is funded 100% by the sale of deeds for burial plots. The Select Board recommends this appropriation by a vote of 3-0. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation by a vote of 9-0. This is a regular housekeeping item. Each year, money needs to be moved from the cemetery trustees’ checking account to the Cemetery Expendable Trust Fund. No amount is raised by taxation for this purpose. If this article fails, the transfer to the Cemetery Expendable Trust will not take place. Article 7, Public Gardens and Planters Expendable Trust Fund: To see if the town will authorize the establishment of an expendable trust fund pursuant to RSA Chapter 31:19A to be known as the Public Gardens and Planters Expendable Trust Fund for the purpose of maintaining and/or enhancing the public gardens and planters located in Peterborough and to designate the Select Board as agents to expend. This fund shall be funded in whole or in part by the proceeds of the Fred and Betty Frye Garden Fund, held by the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation. The Select Board recommends this appropriation by a vote of 3-0. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation by a vote of 8-0. This article seeks to create an expendable trust fund, which will allow the proceeds from the Fred and Betty Frye Garden Fund to be held separately from the town’s operating budget. Any funds left over at the end of the year will be allowed to accumulate from year to year. These funds can only be used for the purpose of maintaining or enhancing the public gardens and planters. Should other funds be donated to the town for this purpose, they could be added to this expendable trust. If this article fails, the expendable trust will not be created, and the proceeds from this fund will continue to be run through the town’s operating budget. They would not be allowed to accumulate from year to year. Article 8, Library Renovation Project Expendable Trust Fund: To see if the town will authorize the establishment of an expendable trust fund pursuant to RSA Chapter 31:19A to be known as the Library Renovation Project Expendable Trust Fund for the purpose of retaining funds previously appropriated for the debt service on bonds not yet taken and to designate the Select Board as agents to expend and further to raise and appropriate the sum of $220,746 to come from the unassigned fund balance, no amount to be raised from taxation. The Select Board recommends this appropriation by a vote of 3-0. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation by a vote of 9-0. Just like Article 5, Article 8 seeks to take money raised and appropriated for debt service payments from the unrestricted fund balance and move it to an expendable trust fund so it can be used to pay down the bond it was appropriated for. Again, no additional amount will be raised from taxation. When the library project was delayed so that the fundraising could be completed, the bond for the project was also delayed. This article also seeks to establish an expendable trust fund for this purpose. If this article fails, the debt service payment already raised through taxation by the town could not be used to offset the library bond, and that payment would need to be raised again through future taxation. Article 9, Transcript Dam Project Expendable Trust Fund: To see if the town will authorize the establishment of an expendable trust fund pursuant to RSA Chapter 31:19A to be known as the Transcript Dam Project Expendable Trust Fund for the purpose of retaining funds previously appropriated for the debt service of bonds not yet taken and to designate the Select Board as agents to expend and further to raise and appropriate the sum of $73,976 to come from the unassigned fund balance, no amount to be raised from taxation. The Select Board recommends this appropriation by a vote of 3-0. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation by a vote of 9-0. As with Articles 5 and 8, this article seeks to establish an expendable trust fund and set aside money that was raised in prior fiscal years so that it may be put towards a transcript dam bond when its payments come due. Because the Transcript Dam project is tied to the Main Street Bridge, when the Main Street Bridge project was delayed, so too was the Transcript Dam project. If this article fails, the debt service payments already raised through taxation by the town could not be used to offset the bond, and those payments would need to be raised again through future taxation. Article 10, Discontinue Funds: To see if the town will vote to discontinue the following Capital Reserve and Expendable Trust Funds, with said funds accumulated interest to date of withdrawal to be transferred to the municipality’s general fund: Financial Software Capital Reserve Fund, date of establishment 9/11/2018, approximate balance of $202.25. Union Street Bridge Reconstruction Capital Reserve Fund, date of establishment 8/2/2006, approximate balance of $0. G.A.R. Hall Expendable Trust Fund, date of establishment 1/1/2017, approximate balance of $0. The Select Board recommends this appropriation by a vote of 3-0. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation by a vote of 8-0. When projects funded by Capital Reserve and Expendable Trust Funds are completed, Town Meeting must vote again to close the funds. When there is some money left over, it is transferred to the general fund. If this article fails, these funds will remain open, and no money will be transferred to the general fund. Article 11, Fly Pond Dam Reconstruction: $270,000. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $270,000 for the purpose of designing, engineering, and reconstructing the Fly Pond Dam, located off of Summer Street, and to authorize the Select Board to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, or any and all other aid, grants, gifts, or revenue source that may become available for said project, and to comply with all laws applicable to said project, and to take any and all action necessary to carry out any vote hereunder or any other action relative thereto. It is intended that this appropriation will be supported by a FEMA grant and other matching funds. The Select Board recommends this appropriation by a vote of 3-0. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation by a vote of 8-0. The Fly Pond Dam runs under a portion of Summer Street. This dam has flooded repeatedly and poses a risk to the road. The town has applied for offsetting funding under two separate FEMA programs. Both programs will provide reimbursement of 75% of the project costs. FEMA will award the grants this summer. The owner of Fly Pond is also a financial partner in the project and is helping to reduce the taxpayer burden. If this article passes, the project to reconstruct- If this article passes, the project to reconstruct the dam on Summer Street will move forward in late twenty twenty-one. If this article fails, the project will be delayed and reevaluated. Article Twelve, Roadway System Upgrades Capital Reserve Fund, four hundred thousand dollars. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred thousand dollars to be placed in the cap previously established Roadway Systems Upgrade Capital Reserve Fund. The Select Board recommends this appropriation by a vote of three zero. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation by a vote of eight zero. This article seeks to support the third year of a ten-year roadway improvement program. This program is part of a long-term plan to rehabilitate roads that are in need of significant reconstruction beyond what would be addressed through an ordinary maintenance program. The town's roadway network is reassessed and rated annually each spring to provide the empirical data needed to support the allocation of funds raised through this ten-year program. The goal of this program is to ensure that the Highway Department's roadway maintenance budget can be dedicated to the preservation of good roads. If this article does not pass, the roadway system upgrades program will be suspended. Article Thirteen, Fire Station Design, two hundred thousand dollars. To see if the town will vote to raise and authorize the expenditure of the same of two hundred thousand dollars for the development of a conceptual design, preliminary cost estimate, and construction drawings for a new fire station on a town-owned parcel located off of Elm Street. The Select Board recommends this appropriation by a vote of three zero. The Budget Committee recommends this appropriation by a vote of eight zero. The purpose of this article is to prepare final design plans and cost estimates for presentation to a future town meeting. The costs of developing these documents will be shared with the ambulance fund, reducing the taxpayer support required. Having completed plans and cost estimates in place is a requirement for any grants the town may be able to apply for to help offset the cost of construction of a future fire station. If this article fails, though, there will be no funds available for the development of these documents, and the project will be delayed. Article Fourteen, Electric Vehicle Charging Stations in the Riverwalk Parking Lot, thirty-five thousand dollars, by petition. To see if the town will vote to allocate a sum of up to thirty-five thousand dollars from the Greater Downtown Tax Increment Finance Funds to be used for the installation, operation, and maintenance of electric vehicle charging stations in the Riverwalk Parking Lot. Implementation of this article will draw funds from an established account and not increase or otherwise affect the Peterborough tax rate. Both the Greater Downtown Tiff Advisory and Economic Development Authority support this article by petition. The Select Board recommends this appropriation by a vote of two-one. The Budget Committee does not recommend this appropriation by a vote of four-four. If this article passes, the town will spend up to thirty-five thousand dollars from the Greater Downtown Tax Increment Finance District for the installation, operation, and maintenance of electric vehicle charging stations in the Riverwalk Parking Lot. If this article fails, the town will not spend funds as outlined in this petition article. Article Fifteen, New Hampshire Resolution to Take Action on Climate Pollution, by petition. We, the town of Peterborough, hereby call upon our state and federal elected representatives to enact carbon pricing legislation to protect New Hampshire from the costs and environmental risks of continued climate inaction. To protect households, we support a carbon fee and dividend approach that charges fossil fuel producers for their carbon pollution and rebates the money collected to all residents on an equal basis. Enacting a carbon cash back program decreases long-term fossil fuel dependence, aids the economic transition for, for energy consumers, and keeps local energy dollars in New Hampshire's economy. Carbon Cash Back has been championed by U.S. economists, January seventeen, twenty nineteen, Wall Street Journal, as the most effective and fair way to deliver rapid reductions in harmful carbon emissions at a scale required for our safety. We expect our representatives to lead in the critical moment for the health and well-being of our citizens and for the protection of New Hampshire's natural resources upon which we all rely. The record of the vote approving this article shall be transmitted by written notice to our town's state legislators, to the governor of New Hampshire, to our town's congressional delegation, and to the president of the United States, informing them of the instructions from their constituents by our town's Select Board within thirty days of this vote by petition. If this article passes, the Select Board will send a letter to those officials reporting the vote as outlined in the article. If the article fails, no such letter will be sent. Article Sixteen, Medicare for All, by petition. To see if the town will adopt the following resolution. Whereas the Medicare for All Act of two thousand nineteen, H R one-three-eight-four, by Representative Pamela Jayapal of Washington and Senator Bernie Sanders of Vermont, would provide publicly funded health insurance for every person in the United States for all necessary medical care, including prescription drugs, hospital and surgical care, outpatient clinic, doctor's office visits, primary and preventative care, emergency services, women's reproductive care, long-term and home care, vision, hearing, and dental care, mental health and substance use disorder care, and other appropriate medical services. And, whereas the act would provide guaranteed coverage without deductibles, copays, and other out-of-pocket expenses slash bureaucracy, bloated overhead and profiteering in the system, assure unfettered choice of doctors and hospitals and protect doctor-patient relationship. And, whereas the town of Peterborough will save over eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year now being spent on healthcare for its employees, and as the cost will be shifted to the federal budget, the town being relieved of the drain, being relieved of the drain would provide tax relief for property owners. And, whereas a simple and unified public financing system as a social insurance plan in an efficient, comprehensive, inclusive, affordable, and sustainable manner, maintaining care delivery private as now is supported by seventy percent of Americans across the political spectrum. Now therefore be it resolved that if voters of Peterborough support the Medicare for All Act, the Select Board shall notify New Hampshire's congressional delegation of its constituents' instructions in writing within thirty days of the vote to strive towards its immediate enactment, thus assuring healthcare as a basic human right for all, of all Americans, by petition. If this article passes, the Select Board will send a letter to those officials reporting the vote as outlined in the article. If the article fails, no such letter will be sent. Article Seventeen, New Hampshire Resolution for Fair Redistricting, by petition. To see if the town will urge that the New Hampshire General Court, which is obligated to redraw the maps of political districts within the state following the two thousand twenty census, will do so in a manner that ensures fair and effective representation of New Hampshire voters. That in order to fulfill this obligation, the New Hampshire General Court shall appoint an independent redistricting commission that draws the new district maps in a way that does not rely on partisan data such as election results or party registration, or favor particular political parties or candidates. The record of the vote approving this article shall be transmitted by written notice from the selectmen to the town of Peterborough's state legislators and to the governor of New Hampshire, informing them of the instruction from, of their constituents within thirty days of the vote by petition. If this article passes, the Select Board will send a letter to those officials reporting the vote as outlined in the article. If the article fails, no such letter will be sent. This concludes the presentation of the two thousand twenty town meeting process and town warrant. The administration office will be accepting questions for a follow-up virtual question and answer session to be held on June thirtieth at six P M. You can submit your questions via email, phone, or mail as shown on this slide. When you do, please be sure to give us your name and your street address so that the questions can be added to the record of this town meeting. All questions will be posted to the town's website in the town meeting section along with this presentation, links to the minutes and recordings of the joint Select Board Budget Committee meetings, and in-depth presentations on some of the articles, including Article Twelve, Roadway Management, and Article Thirteen, Fire Station Design. We will update the website daily through July thirteenth. Thank you for your time tonight and your patience with us as we work to adapt town meeting to respond to these challenging circumstances.